Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get going here. Welcome to our Monday, May 20th, 2024, regular board meeting. We're joined at the table by a couple of ICSC students. Would you guys please introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Viva Winkler. I'm a senior at, sorry.
I'm gonna try again.
There you go. Okay. Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. I'm a senior at Southwest and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
Hi, my name is Derek Arkand. I am a senior at Preble High School and I am just an officer on ICSC.
Okay, next we'll have a roll call. Kinsey? Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Lyerly?
James's excuse tonight.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlock?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Okay, so we have five board members in the room. Andrew is joining us remotely and James won't be joining us tonight. So would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Rick, would you please read the mission statement?
I will. "We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world."
Thank you. And next is a land acknowledgement statement. "We, the members of the Green Bay area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of Northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." Okay, next we're going to hear from our InterCity Student Council members with their report. Take it away, guys.
All right, so at Preble, our dance team went to Disneyland. The academic decathlon team had a successful Nationals competition. We are picking the new officers for the student council and the Preble Band Trip has been announced that they will be going to New Orleans. For East... I am. Let me try that again. All right. For East, Student Council passing of the GAVL ceremony is scheduled for May 23rd, 2024. Our spring pep rally will be held next Thursday. Their spring pep rally will be held next Thursday, in which they will be honoring their principal, Ms. Ferk, who will be retiring this year, then introducing the next principal. Center Stage Showcase was yesterday or was over the weekend and their student pit orchestra received a nomination for outstanding pit. And their student Jenny Duarte Castello was, or is going to be attending the Jimmy Awards. Two students from the school are giving their speeches at local elementary schools and senior send-off is this next week. For J-Doll Trees for tomorrow's school trip is scheduled. Election for student council officers are being held. Field trips are coming up soon and they are welcoming the new member. For Preble, Senior Ball was over the weekend. The mental health 5K awareness run also happened. I heard that it was very successful. Graduation is scheduled for June 5th. National Honor Society induction ceremony will be next week. They are welcoming the new members of ICSC and the concert choir last... Choir concert last week, band and orchestra concerts are to come this week.
All right, and then over at Southwest, we held a successful music banquet. We held our final band and orchestra concert that went very well. We also had our FFA banquet where seniors were awarded with many different prizes. Their track will be having regionals on today, actually. And I believe our tennis team had subsectionals today as well. And our senior scholarship night is coming up this week. And over at West, seniors will be graduating on June 1st. One of their track athletes won athlete of the week. Men's choir won first place at solo and ensemble. Their West Welcome Night will be on May 15th, or was on May 15th. And on May 29th, they will be hosting the premiere of Copa Head, which I believe is... A composer chose to premiere their original composition at West, which is really exciting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, I will move on. Then next is our legislative update and that is Mr. Brian Mills.
Hello, I'm going to next meeting have it nicely formatted in writing for you, but I just have a couple of things I wanted to share today. From WASBA, the state senate had met last month, I'm sorry, last week to override Governor Evers' veto of Senate Bill 917. That raises standards for student teaching and teacher prep programs. And Governor Evers claimed that the bill was unnecessary because of an ongoing pilot program between DWD, between the Department of Work first Development, Department of Public Instruction. And it would cause uncertainty for candidates who are in the program. So that's going to be tied up in discussion. And then also Act 20 and the lawsuit that was filed over that, that's regarding literacy programming. Act 20 will continue despite the law or despite the lawsuit right now. So DPI is continuing forward with that on moving forward. So and then on the federal level, there is two things that I saw that were brought up in the education land. There's discussions on the funding within the final budget hearing on the 2024 budget process and advising people to go ahead and advocate for, to increase the funding for high-poverty schools through Title I and children with disabilities through IDEA and in full-service community schools, as well as the funding program in the budget being set up. So there's two bills that can share more information on that. So those are two things coming up.
Any questions or anything? Okay, thanks, Brian. All right, next we have the consent agenda approval. Would someone like to read the motion? Go ahead.
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
I just do always want to point out, though, that those lists of gifts, and I don't want to take them for granted, a huge list of gifts in our consent agenda. And I'm just so grateful for the generosity.
I agree with you. So, all right. Kinsey? Online voting is now open. Who are you able to vote online? Nothing popped up? Do you want to do a voice vote on this one? Okay.
Yay.
Okay. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, so I just want to take a moment here. We just okayed as a board some very important hires in our district. First, we're gonna, we're gonna give you guys the option of coming up and saying hi, which we love. We love it when you do that so people can get a look at you and get to know you. First is Kale Palzinski. Palzinski, can you come on up and just let us introduce yourself to everybody?
You can sit right.
Yeah, just have a seat.
It's the base one?
Does that work?
Yes.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for the pre-employment process, too. It was fairly painless. But look forward to being back in the community that I reside in and my children go to school in, getting to know all the board members and working again with all the staff, students, and community. So excited to be back and get to work July 1st.
Can you tell everybody what your new position is so that it's recorded?
Yeah, Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you, because we do, we do actually have people who watch us.
Absolutely.
So welcome, welcome back.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is MyVang. We just approved your hiring. If you would like to just introduce yourself and tell us about your new position. Yep, there you go.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to be here tonight. And first of all, I really want to thank Mike Friss for entrusting me to take on this position as the Director of Recruitment and Talent Development. I'd also like to thank everyone involved on the interview selection committee. I know how timely it can be and how much work it is to bring 12 to 15 people in one room together. So I'm very excited to contribute my experience, skills, and knowledge into this position and continue to make a positive impact at Green Bay School District. So thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And then Lisa, Lisa Lipp, come on up. Welcome. Tell the people at home what we just voted on.
So I'm Lisa Lipp. I will be the new principal at East High School. I have been in this district for 24 years and I'm very proud of the work that I've done. And I'm very excited to be able to continue that with our families and the students at East. I started serving the students on the east side at Howe in 2005 and these are my families. These are, these are my, my people and I'm really excited to be able to do that along with my daughter, who will be a senior at East. So I'm really excited to be able to do that with her.
Welcome aboard. Well, you're already here, but congratulations. Thank you. Okay, and then the other thing that we just voted on is some resignations. I just want to mention, give a shout out to Jen Agar from JDoll and Andrea Fries at Fort Howard. And I just want to acknowledge their contributions to our, to our district and wish them well in the future. So, okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the, to the action items and we're gonna, let's see here. I think, I think Lynn has some ideas of how we might take this enormous list of votes and consolidate them a little bit.
If you would entertain a motion to consider some of these together, considering that we spent a lot of time preparing for the last meeting and then talking about these things at the last meeting, I move that we take items A through T as one.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Okay, Kinsey, are you, are you ready? Oh, all right, that's right. Okay, so all in favor of that consolidating the motions A through T as one? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, then I think, does she have to go ahead and actually make the formal motion? Go ahead, yep.
Oh, I move that we approve items A through T.
Second.
Okay. Kinsey? We'll do a voice vote for this one. Okay. McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlock?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Okay, so we're... All right, that brings us to you. "Adjustments to clerical position compensation as recommended by clerical compensation study." Go ahead.
I move that the adjustments to the clerical position compensation as recommended by the clerical compensation study as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, any discussion?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
I am seeking some clarification to a question raised at the last meeting about the compensation, those steps, and, and how those steps are tied to... Well, first and foremost is the process of putting the existing staff into those positions. It's just some more clarity about whether or not that that in itself was equitable and has there been feedback, or at least feedback received from a representative, representatives from the employment base of the fairness of that? And were all, any and all concerns addressed prior to this being implemented? The other, the other concern that I have that I would like to get some clarity to is the issue of performance being tied to the step-level advancements and some more rigor, or at least some demonstration of the rigor that's put into step-level advancement, not, and more than just time and grade or time and service.
Okay. Mike, can you join us? First question is about feedback that's been gathered from the association regarding this, the clerical study.
Hello, I apologize. I want to order breath. I came back upstairs after thanking our new hires for joining us. The association, the GBEA doesn't represent our clerical employee group. So they, they aren't an entity that we seek input from regarding that aspect. So they were not spoken with around that, per se. We do have a group representing other employee groups that include hourly staff and would incorporate representation from folks who work in the umbrella employee group of clerical. And so they, they were, they were informed back in April of the progress, talking about what it looked like. And there were no questions asked by that group at that time. The overall, this is a project that has been going on for a number of years and I came on board with it in July, June of 2023, kind of picked it up. So I, I can't speak from personal knowledge of the month or the year and a half before that. I can only go based on the notes that I saw. The process as outlined, kind of in the memo, was school principals or department leads along with a sampling of staff, not, it wasn't that all 180 staff members completed what's called the job description questionnaire. They provided the job description and then asked to fill out a questionnaire, about a 17-page questionnaire around, you know, what their work was, et cetera. And then their supervisor reviewed it for other expectations, the requirements of the position, any suggestions or feedback. It then went to the consulting group. They did the analysis in the market as we shared the different, the different private as well as public comparable, you know, pieces. And then they came back and said, this is our recommendation for how those would be graded out from a wage standpoint and where these positions fit in the marketplace. We had our, that, so that's kind of the backstory. I apologize if I didn't answer your question.
I'm trying to, to, just to understand, well, first and foremost, is there... Do you have a sensing or have the clerical, our existing clerical staff, have they had any direct feedback or an opportunity to provide feedback to you about this and about the fairness of it? Do they have an indication as to where they're going to fall along the step level? And then have you, has there been feedback, either positive or negative? And have you addressed those?
Yes, thank you for asking. I appreciate that. So prior to the work session last week, they were provided a memo outlining all the information, reminding them of where we had left off and where we are now. They also were all provided a link to provide feedback and input, including questions, right? And so then we took that information and then last Tuesday, held a virtual meeting where we provided them, we recorded the meeting virtually, provided them slides summarizing everything, reiterating, addressing some of the questions and input they provided, giving them again the input link. And then they were provided this afternoon, a, this was directly all the questions that you asked and here are all the answers. The only thing that we removed was, and we clarified it in the document, we said, for any questions where people said, why am I this? I do ABC and so-and-so only does A and B or X and Y. We did not include that because that gets into kind of calling out a colleague and maybe personally identifiable stuff. We also, based on some of the specific things that were asked from some individuals, we've reached out to supervisors to say, hey, this question came around. Can we meet and talk about this? And I know that there will need to be continued meetings. If approved, there will be continued meetings to make sure that there's an understanding and some changes if appropriate. For instance, one suggestion that was made was even though the consulting company recommended the use of the term clerk for one of the position kind of categories, significant feedback said that that was not viewed favorably. So we've changed it to say assistant instead of clerk. We feel like that meets the concerns and also addresses the input that we received based on an understanding of that. So that, that also addresses, I think.
And then the other part of the question is about performance and factoring in of performance as a consideration for step-level advancement, more so than just time and service or time and the grade.
Right. In public education, in Wisconsin at least, that tends to not be the industry standard. The analysis and conversation around this is that is not a strategic move when it comes to recruiting and retention. We have not set up to do that in our industry, let alone in our school district. And that would represent a fundamental cultural shift that would not be applied to all employee groups and just one. And I don't think that we recommend making that change right now.
Well, help me understand that. So letting, letting an employee know where they stand as far as their performance and their performance in and of itself is not going to be a consideration for moving through the system. So, so I guess, just help me understand, how do you deal with performance or justify the movement or advancement of people along that scale without some reference to how they're doing? How do they know where they stand throughout this thing? And maybe this is an education process for me, because I, I don't understand how, okay.
Yeah. You're absolutely right. Education works very different than, than other organizations. It sure does. I've seen merit pay attempts in the state of Wisconsin that have led to the flight of teachers. It would definitely be a shift, as Mike has said. I think it would require this board having some serious conversations about potential impact. But to your point, there is supervision and evaluation that occurs. And in education, typically in the state of Wisconsin, performance issues are dealt with by either coaching that individual up or coaching them out. And that happens frequently. In fact, you vote on those pretty regularly. Brian and Lynn.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, these employees would continue to still have the same supervision and review model that they would have. It would just match with their new job description on there.
That's correct, yes.
With that, in regards to the conversation that is taking place, would it, would it help at all or would it cause any major changes if we were to delay voting on this for two weeks? I know our goal is to have it by the start of the new fiscal year is what it looks like. So those concerns that were brought up can be addressed with those employees. Or is that something that could be ongoing on the HR side of it? In regards to the classification of a couple employees' positions on there that were brought up recently, and you said that they were shared with them this afternoon or yesterday afternoon?
No, this was shared with them last week, the proposed schedule. The, the appeals process that is recommended based on, to be totally frank about it, I would prefer the opportunity to, I would prefer that the board vote this evening and I would prefer that we have then the opportunity to utilize the appeal process that is part of this, that, that is where a review of how things are graded out would take place.
Would the appeals process come before the board or would that be handled internally with your department?
Certain.
I guess what I'm looking at is if the appeals process goes one way, is that able to be changed in your department? Or is it something that could be brought forward to the board? Either just so we're informed or that we would need to approve it?
Once the board approves it, we would take it from there to answer your question. Okay, Lynn?
So I just, I'm a little confused because it sounded to me, Vicki, like you were talking about the advancement of teachers. But we're talking only about clerical positions. And you're saying that because these clerical staff work in the field of education, there can't be any kind of performance review associated with their move to the next pay level?
I'm suggesting that if you choose to do that, you should consider it across the board. And you should also be prepared for loss of staff because other districts don't follow that same model. I trust our supervisors and their ability to appropriately evaluate our clerical staff. In fact, all of our staff, and I see Kinsey shaking her head because she knows. I trust our administrators to... I I trust our administrators to do that appropriately. And if we have clerical that aren't performing, we offer opportunity for growth and give them the chance to show that they can work to the level of expectations. And if not, as I suggested earlier, they get coached out.
Anybody, go ahead, Mike.
I I apologize for not clarifying this earlier. I know Vicky mentioned it last week when the topic came. Our employee handbook, which does represent all employees and, you know, we had a handbook committee topics to address. You know, this this was never raised as an area of concern. The the wage schedule placement, step movement after the first year of employment. If step increases are part of a position, it lists this out. It says, you know, it is a service years-based step schedule for all, if steps exist. An employee may be frozen at their previous year's wage rate for more serious issues. And an employee may be held to the previous year's step for less than satisfactory performance. So that's what Vicky mentioned last week. So that's, it's like unless they move, you know, so unless such and such, someone would move forward.
Go ahead, Rick.
Hopefully, this is my last question. Is is there an expectation as years of service accumulate? Is there an expectation of some kind of performance movement towards mastery of that role, that function? Or is, does the expectations, are they the same for an entry level, step one person or one out at fifteen, for example?
The expectations would be based on the job description. I would contend that to Vicky's point around the annual evaluation supervision process that involves goal setting. And so I would expect that as someone gains more knowledge, skills and experience, their goals would reflect that and that they with their supervisor would establish, look, this is an appropriate goal where you are now. And that's how that would be reflected most typically.
Now I'm trying to remember what the question was I wanted to ask.
It's okay, Andrew, did you have any questions?
Yeah, ask Andrew.
Oh, can't hear you.
Thank you. Yes, can you see when I put my hand up? Can somebody, I can't, because I did, but oh, thank you. Just making sure, I can't see myself on the screen, on your screen very well. I guess what what I would have to say here and Mike, if you want to correct me if if I'm wrong here, but it it seems to me that there, I mean, there is a skill set that we're hiring for and we want we're gonna, we're gonna bring people into that. I'll just for consistency, keep talking about this. We have a school secretary position, although it'll be known by a new name, but no one will probably call it that, but the, but it will be. So somebody will go into that position. Now, we're going to hire. We're going to do our very best to hire someone with the complete set of skills on day one for that job description, right?
Absolutely, we we always look for that that mathematical formula, right, of college skill, experience, disposition should yield wisdom.
Right, so I guess I'm I'm trying to it's it's not, it's not so much a situation where, I mean, yes, yes, people get more efficient as they know the the systems and the software better and learn some some shortcuts and and things along the way. But if you've been there for the the mechanism, if you want to build a new skill set and move beyond, it's really if you want to aspire to a different, to a different level and, right? And if you want to go to a different level that would have more responsibilities in the job description, then we're gonna hopefully, we're doing everything we can to help you explore that pathway when there's an opening. But it's different to an extent, I think, than I'm trying. I'd have to get a little deep in the weeds to come up with the right example. But okay, maybe, maybe if a, maybe if a company was hiring coders or web developers or something, you might have the the general title of web developer, but you might have huge jumps in skill set without another position to move into or something like that. Where here, you're either here, people are, there's not a wide range of skill. Does that make sense? Is that?
I think it 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 depends a little bit in terms of what we learned through this study is that of the nearly fifty positions that had been categorized as clerical, many of them did not meet what had been a more classic clerical or secretarial description. And that led to, whoa, this doesn't fit into three levels anymore. This is really a, there's different ways of thinking about this based on the prerequisites for the positions that are falling in the same umbrella. It it, there needed to be greater differentiation. And then secondly, you know, Brian has has talked previously about what are the opportunities for career advancement opportunities based on professional learning credentials? I don't want to take your words, but that, you know, that how do we have that so that people that wish to move and develop those skills? So they can be considered for these other positions that come along, right?
I always feel like our clerical staff, there is actually quite a wide range of skills required. Depending on also like which which school you work in, which department you work in, I mean, it's it's kind of, there's, there's quite a large breadth of of diversity in what's required of those of those positions. And and so I'm going to just back up a little bit. If you start start with the premise, not the premise, it's just fact that educational staffing is critically short. Can you talk a little bit about how this will help us with our recruitment and retention and being more competitive compared to the districts around us?
I think there's two things that go on. I think one thing in the analysis and the discussion was that if you have somebody who is in one of our our excellent, you know, college career readiness programs coming out of high school, they may have worked as a co-op student and they may be ready to continue. You know, we do have some positions that require high school diploma that could get you, but it would be like your first job out of high school, right? I mean, we've had folks that have made a forty-year career out of that. And in the current structure, they get paid for all forty years, right? So that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense when it, when we think about things. Secondly, when you're seeking to provide an opportunity to hi- to hire folks, when you have a range, it gives you a little bit more latitude and somebody who you go through the process of, oh, they 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 may be applied, they interview, they're a great candidate, and then they find out, oh, so you want me to leave place X, Y, or Z that is not maybe another school district, but it's another local employer? Like, I can't leave that place because where's, this is my one and only thing and I'm not going to move. And so that becomes a bit of the the dialogue that I think with a single set wage and for a single set position like this, that can be a career type of a position. It doesn't show an opportunity for growth as it currently stands outside of an annual cost of living adjustment.
Okay, Brian and then Lynn. Oh, okay, and then Andrew.
One of the things that you know, looking at this from an education part, one of the things that we need to recognize with being the largest school district in the area is that provides a lot of different career opportunities for our employees. We look at it for our educators that they have opportunities to bid into different, well, to post into different buildings that they I've used this phrase a lot of times that you're employed by the Board of Education, you're not necessarily employed by your principals. That gives you opportunities to move from someplace within the district. And I think we need to also look at that with our clerical staff, with our facility staff, with all of our support staff and and non-teaching staff, that this also provides that opportunity that if you're really strong at your position and you want to move up, I would imagine there's usually opportunities for you to move up and that we have a process set up for that within internal postings and in the normal process we have for that. I understand the concern or the the point being brought up with, you know, just timing grade and moving forward. In education, as you mentioned, it gets tricky with it because we're not producing widgets. We're not, you know, doing a set thing with this where those skills are going to continue to evolve. And if if they don't, as was mentioned, we have processes and we have policies and procedures set up for that. So I think the system itself works with it. I support what we're doing here. I hope that, you know, any appeals process can you know, get shaken out and we can figure out all the the final details with that. But I'm very concerned with the with the conversation of going towards merit and and just merit pay because in education that there are districts that do that. And I can tell you within the education world of people that I talk to, they know which districts do that and often do not apply there.
Okay, Lynn and then Andrew.
I remembered what I wanted to ask, and it's really a question of clarification. You say, and Brian just mentioned it now, that if we pass this and this goes into effect, then there will be an appeals opportunity. So in other words, if someone feels they have been classified incorrectly in the wrong step, they will have an opportunity to appeal, right?
Let me just qualify what you're asking. People will be allowed to to appeal the, where the position was placed. Not, we're not, we're not rolling out an appeals process for, oh, I should be step six, not step five. It was, yeah, it was, my position should, was looked at wrong. I don't think that this information was accurate. Here's why, and we'll follow the process to have that analyzed and then and then the appeal determine like, oh, okay, that should, or nope, that that's based on all the analysis should stay, so.
The reason that I ask that is that I don't know if the board is aware that we all received an email from one of our clerical staff late this afternoon. And I just happened to to look at my email while I was logging on for the meeting and had a chance to read it very, very quickly. It's a rather long message, but the point is, one of the points is I I've looked at this new proposal and I think I'm being demoted or something like that. I don't think my position is is correctly represented in this scale. And I'm thinking that's one of the things that would go through the appeals process. Okay, then I'm good. I just don't want this person to not have had any kind of hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Mike, is anybody, is, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is it, is anybody being reduced in salary?
No. Everybody's getting at least that four point one two increase. First, at least, right? And then and then they get their step placement as well, based on where this will land. So yes, nobody's being reduced.
Andrew? That's good. Andrew?
Yes, I think I, I think I didn't pick exactly the right word before because all of our, all of our positions like these have have a wide range of skills. Of course, the word I was looking for is variance. So I think within now, especially now that we have six levels, there's not going to be a wide, we, someone is going to come in on day one with the skill set for the position for whatever whatever level it is, they're going to come in with that that skill set on day one. It's not going to be a situation where probably, I I mean, unless we're really having to go outside of the the norm to find people, it's not a situation where we would be having someone who would be you know, maybe a trainee with eighty percent of the skills present. We should, we should be paying what we need to get people to come in with a hundred percent of of the skills. And so that's why I see the the step movement as as just making sense here. I think there's, could be options to discuss jumping ahead in steps, if that makes sense. If the only thing that's changed is you're bilingual, unless maybe that's covered now in in levels or special circumstances, just like there could be special circumstances where someone is coming into the district and we might be starting them on a step other other than one. But since the person will have all of the skills for the position, I just don't, I just don't see them not moving forward on those on those steps annually. If there was a case-by-case exception because we had to hire someone without the full skill set and wanted to have time for them to catch up, but that's I I think this is a good proposal that gives everyone, it's going to make us more competitive for these positions, which is important.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, so for, I was going to say for for lateral entry hires, it's going to be they they enter or that you've got the flexibility to enter them at a given step other than than zero, for example. And that's going to be an assessment process to determine, and that's going to be based on on what their their level of experience in similar roles or in that role? Is that, is that how you, how they're going to do?
Because we'll, we'll work closely to ensure that we follow processes and practices that adhere to the law or equitable and take into consideration, you know, relevant experience, doing substantially similar work to determine that, absolutely.
Any, anybody else? Okay. Are we ready to, did someone read the motions? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Rick, are you able to vote online? All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Go ahead.
Mike, can we, if there's any substantial changes to this, can you just email us? In particular, with the question that was brought up with the board through the email, as the appeals process works through, could you just update us? Either through email or whatever the normal process would be?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, um, next is the performance contract approval for Lombardi and King, and I believe we're gonna, you're from Josh. Please go ahead, yep.
I moved that through as, yeah, I want to make sure I'm reading the right one. Yes, I moved that the resolution to enter into a performance contract with McKinstry as presented be approved.
Second.
All right, many questions for Josh.
Yep, I mentioned, I mentioned that this was going to be coming your way at the last work session. This is a very specific type of contract that is outlined in Wisconsin statute that allows governmental and municipal entities to enter into a contract for 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 energy energy savings that is guaranteed by the the people we're contracting with to essentially pay for itself. As part of the referendum, it passed in November of twenty twenty-two. There was a solar project for King and Lombardi. We've been working with McKinstry on this as we have been since twenty seventeen. Originally, they helped out with a whole bunch of stuff under the energy efficiency. I'm sorry, the the energy exemption to the revenue limit. So there are very specific noticing requirements. So we had to notice ten days ahead of time with this very specific very specific language. And now that we've given that time, we are, I am asking that you a- approve the district engaging in this contract. Our estimates allow us to also replace the LED lighting at King, which was not originally a part of the plan. It will result in a ninety-nine percent electricity offset at King and a forty-eight percent offset at Lombardi. Total cost of the project is two million nine hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars. We are estimating a focus on energy incentive coming back to the district in the amount of about a hundred thousand dollars. And then Inflation Reduction Act tax credits in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. The estimated lifetime energy savings if this, these projects are undertaken is three million nine hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. So savings of four million over the lifetime. Upfront investment of three million looks like almost four hundred thousand coming back. Looks like almost four hundred thousand coming back in focus on energy and IRA money.
Brian?
Josh, I don't know if you'll know this, but when they look at the return on investment, is that taking into consideration? Price hikes for electric and gas and utilities? And if you got that answer, I'm going to be thrilled.
There is an inflationary factor that's that's used. But it's not, you know. It's it's like anything else if you. There aren't wild swings built into it, right? So if something completely wacky happens, obviously, that could affect our our bills in in different ways.
Go ahead. I seem to remember that this was discussed at the last Clean Energy Advisory Committee meeting. And and I also recall that. That is an ongoing advisory committee. The purpose of it is not to finish a project and be done, but to go on to advise the district. And so just refresh my memory, was the was the advisory committee supportive of this, Josh?
Yeah, they were super excited about this, actually. And that is an ongoing advisory committee. I'm working on a separate agreement with McKinstry to help that committee through. The development of. A sustainability plan. That when that that committee was formed in their charter. It it says that they have to present a sustainability plan to the board by December of twenty twenty four. Actually, just met with McKinstry today about that. And that timeline is is doable. But about the specific, this specific project, yes, they were very supportive. Excited to be taking these steps, especially to see that ninety nine percent offset at King.
I'm really excited about that, too. Go ahead, go.
I'm very happy to see that the district gets. Involving in the idea of a clean energy, renewable energy. I think that is the way of the future. But I'm curious, these projections, the lifetime. Savings or upfront fee at three million. Does that kind of? Kim or at least include in the maintenance costs of that particular program to maintain it? Or we just complete the project, it just sits there, it's perfect, right all the way through? Or the the maintenance part of it? I'm curious about that. Is that part of the structure? Projection that we put in here or that's kind of separately?
Yeah, there are asset management services included as part of this contract. So this being a performance contract, it's the sort of thing where McKinstry is going to be with us through the the life of this equipment. So helping us. With the with the maintenance and and managing those assets as well. It also. We're we're going to have access to energy dashboards to monitor and make sure that we are. We are headed toward that. That that goal of cost savings and energy energy reduction for those sites.
Josh, do you have a timeline for installation?
Yeah, this summer. We're hoping to get up on those roofs on June tenth.
Is it quite, can you talk a little bit about how how complicated installation will be?
I've never been through a solar implementation of this scale. The people that have are indicating that this is fairly routine and and not overly. It's not going to take a lot, a long time, and it's not going to. Be extremely disruptive.
And can you just remind me, I feel like you you spoke about this. But at one point, it was going to be at ground level, and now it's on the roof.
That's right, it's the original idea was to build. An array out in the field between those two schools. And as we started looking into what that would cost versus doing the the rooftop. PB, we went with rooftop. It was cheaper and got us a. Got to see a more efficient system.
Will those will the maintenance staff at at those buildings need to have special training?
Yes, I mean, it is going to be a little bit different. The equipment they interact with on a daily basis is really not not going to change. You know, at the end of the day, there are still boilers. And stuff like that. But they will need to be trained on how to clean, you know, the panels and stuff.
Okay, Brian?
Will it be, I have solar panels and I love showing off my phone, especially in June and August, how effective they are. It's not as exciting in January with it. But will we be able to see or share that data either on King and Lombardi's website? Or something where it shows the amount consumed each day or produced each day? And there's equivalencies on residential ones of saying, okay, this is how many trees I've offset. And this is how many cell phones I've charged with it that we'd be able to share with the public.
Yeah, that was something we actually discussed at the last advisory team meeting is being very intentional about. About sharing our data and our progress for that goal through publicly available dashboards. On our webpages. So we will have access to that data. I will, I will not be here to to see the project through, unfortunately. But I would, I I thought that that was a very good suggestion by by the committee.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Thanks, Josh. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to combine items W through DD.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Oh, sorry, let's have discussion. Is there any discussion? Brian?
I know that there was some planning with part of it. Does that throw off anything before or does it still match up with it? Okay.
Anybody else? All right, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so can someone make that motion again?
I'll move to approve items W through DD as presented.
Second.
Okay. Kinsey?
We'll do voice votes for these if you combine them.
Okay, Crossen?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Okay. All right, motion passes. That we're moving on to EE. Do we want to take this one individually? Go ahead, Lynn.
I'll offer a motion and then we'll see if somebody wants to take it individually.
Okay.
I move we take items EE through JJJ as one.
I'd like to offer a friendly. If we could remove YY from that, I'd like to change something on that.
That's fine.
All right, so we have to vote on the friendly. No, we don't have to vote on the friendly. I'll second. All right. Any discussion on on Lynn's motion? So EE through JJ, except for YY. YY, sorry. It's like a foreign language. Sorry. EE through JJJ, except for YY. Jeez. It's a little bit ridiculous. Oh, my God. Okay, so are we ready to vote on this? Oh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Good. Now we need a motion. Go ahead, Lynn.
I move to approve. The. Policies presented in items.
EE.
EE through, oh, I can't do this, Brian, you do it.
I move that we approve policies EE through JJJ excluding YY.
Second.
All right. I'm sorry, is this a discussion? You got it, Kinsey? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go back now to YY, policy four four zero, student rights and responsibilities. Do we need Melissa? All right, go ahead.
I move that through visions to Board Education, Board of Education Policy four forty, Student Rights and Responsibilities. As presented be approved, but I'm going to amend in a second. Second. Listen, I'm going to share with the board what I'm looking at. And then I'll give you a chance on that. As far as updates, one of the phrasing, if you look on page. Three, where it says it's the blue three under D, due process and three. It currently says physical force or restraint may be used by school personnel only to prevent a breach of discipline. Or to stop a continuing breach of discipline. And I would like to change, Melissa's okay if I go or do you want me to wait?
Can you tell me where you are again?
Yep, under D. Number three. Physical force or restraint may be used by school personnel only to prevent a breach of discipline or to stop a continuing breach of discipline.
So I revise that. In the one that was attached says now says physical force or restraint may be used by school personnel. Only in accordance with district policy and state and federal law.
And that's probably I'd like to just update briefly, even with that. I'd like to take out force. And for it to read physical restraint may be used by trained school personnel in accordance with school district. I'm sorry, district policy and state and federal law.
Sadie, can you read that again, please?
It would read physical restraint. Thanks, Harry.
Yeah, my phone wants to listen to you.
Who doesn't? Physical restraint may be used by trained school personnel in accordance with district policy and state and federal law. The reasoning for that is there's a difference between force and restraint. And in my career, that's force is a considerably different thing than restraint. And the part specifying that there's trained school personnel. School districts train their student, their staff members, they should be. Certain staff members that are restraining students and for the protection of the students and for the staff members on there. So that's why I propose this change.
Would anyone like to go ahead, Lynn?
I just want to point out that Brian is the only member of our board, I believe, who has to engage in restraint of students and is trained to do so. And the first time that I had to deal with that concept, I went to him and asked him what it meant and how it worked and that sort of thing. And so I think that his guidance is good.
Yes, please.
Just wondering if that would prevent somebody that's untrained from intervening? If they were needed?
It's vague in that it's not consistent with the seclusion and restraint policy. So if a student is obviously in danger of hurting himself or others. There's certain measures that a staff member can take. Go ahead.
I am more than happy to remove the trained part, but I definitely want this to for us to look into that some more with it. And I'm happy to talk to any fellow board members, anyone else. That's sitting at this table that's interested. With it, so Kinsey, if it's okay, did you, I don't know if you put that? No, okay, I'll repeat it now. I understand. Well, I don't know if we have a motion on the table, do we? Well, okay, it's no one seconded, so here. I move that we update. Part D three to read. Physical restraint may be used by school personnel in accordance with district policy and state and federal law.
Did that cover it? Okay.
I'll second the amendment.
Could you explain why you want to make that change, Brian?
I would be more than happy to talk to you after.
We have, can. Can I explain? So we prefer in this district and in accordance with state law, that staff be trained in proper restraints. There's safety reasons, there's. Child due process reasons, there's a, and Vicky can interrupt me if I'm not explaining this correctly. And in ninety nine percent of the cases, those who are employing restraints have been trained in nonviolent. It's nonviolent crisis intervention. We are a district, when we count all of our employees, of four thousand employees. That's a lot of people to train. There's cycles of training. There's refreshers, there's the original training, then there's. When you have to have the initial again, there's train the trainers, there's all sorts of training. And. There may be a time when a student is going to do something that could harm themselves or others. And the only adult in the room has not been trained. They're going to have to make a split second decision as to whether to engage in a common sense restraint. In order to help that child and help the others in the room. Go ahead.
But that doesn't answer my question, because Brian just took out the word trained, but he's removing. Only to prevent a breach of discipline or to stop. You said about only it comes out and we only put in according to law.
He he was looking at a different, so what I had revised. After last week's board meeting, based on what Brian had found. I revised that language to what I had proposed was physical force or restraint may be used. By school personnel only in accordance with district policy and state and federal law. Brian wants force taken out because physical force is different than physical restraint. And then and then he's taking out only in accordance and just have it say. And then, and then he's taking out only in accordance and just have it say, in accordance. I think Andrew was next. Andrew?
Yes, I would say I prefer this. I prefer this language to, I just don't like the it introduces a new idea of, of a breach of discipline and what does that mean when we have policies that are certainly err on the side of not trying to have less physical restraints and things, and I just don't like introducing this new breach of discipline concept where we have plenty of, we have defined concepts for use of restraint, and so I'd like to stay with the existing policies.
Right, and just for clarification, it doesn't say that anymore. Yeah, for clarification, it doesn't say that anymore.
So that's really confusing though, if we don't have it on the red line. I do, I do have the email, so I found that in the but I'm I really think we need to make sure that we have the red line in the board docs because the, so the public has it too, but I support Brian's amendment. I like it a little bit better than where we were.
To be clear, the language from last week was new language, so when I changed it because you hadn't adopted it, it's not going to be in this version because it's not in the existing policy. That's why you're not seeing it. Because it was new language proposed during their work session. You asked that it be changed, so when I edit that, because it's not in the existing policy, you're not going to see it when I bring it forth to the regular board meeting.
So it can't be red.
So you are, yep, so you're looking at an old version somewhere. That's not what was uploaded to board docs.
I don't know, I'm looking at off of board docs though, so you said, I'm looking at, if you're saying I'm looking at something that was not uploaded to board docs, then something is wrong with my board docs login, because that's, I clicked on it today and I'm looking at physical force or restraint maybe, and I'm, do I have it backwards?
Okay, we're gonna let Brian talk here.
So Andrew, I'm following the same page on that and looking at the clean document with it. The motion I made would be D three. And it would say, physical restraint may be used, I'm, physical restraint may be used by school personnel only to by trained school personnel, I'm sorry, let me reset that, Andrew. Physical restraint may be used by school personnel in accordance with district policy and state and federal law. That would replace all of three on there. So I think that just copies got messed, just, I went through the same thing with looking at the red one instead of that part, so that's what that would say on that section. That's my motion. Can I have a follow?
Please.
Lynn, in regards to your question with it, I, I'm trying not to wear two different hats with it, that's why I didn't wanna speak on it because when we're saying policy, I didn't wanna get into the training discussion with it, that's why I didn't really answer your question and wanted to kind of explain the differences not here, so does that make sense? Kind of?
All right. I'm not sure what our status is. Go ahead.
I just like to ask Melissa, are you comfortable with what Brian is proposing?
Yes. And Vicky, you are too?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not sure where we are in motions. Can someone bring me up to date? Okay. Are we ready to vote on this new language? Just the new language and then we'll vote on the policy. All right. Both, okay, go ahead, Kinsey. McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now we're gonna actually vote on the policy.
No, because there still could be discussion or other amendments, right?
I move that the revised, the revisions to the Board of Education Policy 440 as amended, students' rights and responsibilities be approved.
Yeah, I haven't, I wanna, we are not finished discussing. We've made one amendment, but we're not finished discussing.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Was, and wasn't that motion already made? There was a main motion and then we amended it, right? We did Brian's amendment and we passed it, so now we're on the amended motion. So.
Second.
All right, discussion.
I'm
This would give anyone a chance to make amendments as well.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Right, but didn't, didn't that a motion, didn't that motion have to get made to amend it in the first place? Right, didn't we have a motion for 440 and we started discussing and the first thing you did, Brian, was you did an amendment, right?
Yes.
And so we passed it, and so there's, there's nothing new here, right? There's, until someone moves an amendment, which I'm going to.
That's what I'm asking you to do now.
Yeah, okay. So I do have an amendment, I emailed, I emailed it just very recently for a purpose, if we need to get it on a screen. And now, understanding that I'm comparing to the, the clean version, which has changed, and I understand now why the red version couldn't be changed, so I'm looking at this clean 440. I'll make my, I'll move my amendment and then I'll explain it. This relates to Section 1A. And I moved to change this section from what is proposed to, students are entitled to the same basic civil rights guaranteed by law to all. They do not cease to enjoy the protection of fundamental rights once they enter the schoolhouse door. Students also have the responsibility to respect the rights of teachers, other students, and all persons involved in the educational process and must exercise, observe, and adhere to school rules and regulations.
Andrew, just to be clear. You're changing the A, 1A under purpose, the very first, the very first paragraph.
1, 1A in 440, yes.
Okay. Yes, wait me a second.
I will second that.
Okay.
Okay. I can explain?
Yeah, it would be nice to be able to see that. Oh.
Yeah. I emailed to Kinsey, right? I mean, I can email to the board members, but I assumed it was maybe going up on a screen.
Yeah, Kinsey's pulling it up now.
Okay.
Andrew, thank you. Andrew, why don't you go ahead and start your explanation?
Yeah, so this is, this is subtle, but it's important. I, I think this policy goes back to, we had, most of the words in this policy were about about student rights. It included some very historical language about not ceasing to enjoy the protection of fundamental rights once they enter the schoolhouse door. I, I didn't like removing that. I also understand that we wanna have it balanced with the responsibility to respect the rights and teachers. Rights of teachers, other students, all other, all persons involved in the educational process. I just thought the language went pretty far with, you know, students have the primary responsibility to inform themselves. Do they when they're, do they when they're early elementary kids? I don't know. And I think we have exercise, observe, and adhere to school rules and regulations, I think is I think is sufficient, and we already have policies that say that you can't cause substantial disruption that distracts from the, detracts from educational opportunities. It seems like we took something that was a balanced mix of student rights and responsibilities and just packed it full of additional responsibilities language, which I think sends a, maybe a subtle message that we don't want to, and I think we're adequately covered with my amendment.
Go ahead. So I just wanna speak to the reason I removed the sentence about the schoolhouse door. The schoolhouse door is from the Tinker decision back in the nineteen sixties, when literally you walked through the schoolhouse door and that's where you earned your rights to be in the school. We have now had decisions that have gone beyond the schoolhouse door. The most recent First Amendment case was the Mahoney decision where a student was disciplined for tweeting from a gas station. And the Supreme Court said, no school, you don't have the right, the student retains her rights even outside of the schoolhouse door. We have kids who attend virtual schools, we have all sorts of activities going on beyond the schoolhouse door. That's why I eliminated that sentence, because I thought it was too restrictive. But if you wanna put the rights just back into the schoolhouse door, that's fine, but I don't think that is consistent with the way that the law has expanded our right, the constitutional rights for students in, since technology has expanded those rights. Okay. When you were drafting this, did you, were you guided by, I don't know, WASB or any kind of, you know, any kind of other entity? Or was this, was this your own, your own craft? I've looked at so many policies and drafting these policies, it's not just the WASB policy, it's, again, because I can search within board docs, I do a meta-search and it brings up schools all across the nation who have their policies in board docs, so I can't answer that honestly, but I, it was, I do recall it was my decision to take out the schoolhouse door sentence because I thought it was too restrictive for our students. Okay. Brian and, oh. Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, in that case, if we're intending to be I, I didn't, I didn't consider the fact that it was trying to be more expansive. I'm still concerned that people might misunderstand it, but I would, I would entertain I would entertain, I guess I would be open to a a friendly of just, they do not cease to enjoy the protection of fundamental rights, period. And then the rest of it would still be there, but if schoolhouse door, if we're thinking it could be restrictive instead of expansive, like I would be okay with taking that out.
Brian? And then Lynn?
Andrew, I, I appreciate the change that you're looking at. I thought I was going to head into a different direction with it, and I'm trying to see if we might have a way out of this then. With the motion that we have, in looking at the changes on this, my main concern with it was just the word that it said, students are citizens entitled in, in our district and in federal law, it's my understanding, you know, a student of our school district, we're not that the citizen word is more concerning to me than the rest of the phrasing on here, so.
Oh, yeah. I did it because we have students, we have students who, and we have students who are you know, we have plenty of students who might be fully legal residents that are not a citizen and so forth.
So what I would offer, Andrew, and I think the way we'd go through this parliamentary-wise is, if your motion fails, I would also be willing to just or anyone could make a motion to strike the word citizens at, at the original one, on the clean version that we have, so it would say, students are entitled to the same basic civil rights guaranteed by law. I'd stop it there. They have the responsibility to respect the rights of teachers, other students, and all persons involved in the educational process and must must exercise a high degree of self-discipline in observing and adhering to school rules and regulations. So basically, striking the first citizen on there and leaving it as is. But that's not the motion we have right now, so.
Okay. So are, I, we're gonna vote on Andrew's motion to amend that language?
Yeah, I just wanna say, the, the high degree of, I guess, the high degree of self-discipline in observing and adhering, that, that seems to be getting awfully I don't know, that's, that's pretty, again, given, given the range of ages that we're looking at, that, that just seems to be a pretty that's pretty heavy for me and it's enough to make me vote no on the whole thing. It's just too, it's, it tips the scales too much from rights and responsibilities to throwing in a bunch of more responsibilities, and I, I think a message is behind, is behind that intended or not?
I'm going to put the students at our board table on the spot here because they are students and they live this every day, and if you don't, if you don't wanna speak to this, I understand, but please, if you have any opinion at all about this language, feel free to share it with us.
Um, I I don't want to seem rude at all. I don't really see the need to have the two separate sentences in the amendment to 1A, the students are entitled to the same basic civil rights guaranteed by law to all. They do not cease to enjoy the protection of fundamental rights once they enter the schoolhouse door. I don't like the schoolhouse door phrasing, that was one of the first things I wrote down. And I also, I also don't really see the need to have those as two separate sentences. I liked Brian's proposed amendment, but that's not what you're voting on right now. I appreciate that, that was something that was thought of, taking out citizens. But other than that, I see, I personally see no issue with 1A.
Okay. Thank you. Did you wanna chime in or? Okay, that's fine. I, like I said, I was putting you on the spot, but you know, when we have actual students here, it's nice to hear. So go ahead, Brian.
I don't mind the phrase, high degree of self-discipline, because I think that that expectation of self-discipline and is subjective as it is, based on what grade the students in, based on what their, their social skills are, their behavior skills, and I think that gives us that opportunity to say that we were expecting a high degree of self-discipline, but that high degree can vary between it. I guess one thing is, you know, fair doesn't mean equal, you know, and I think that that is caught in that part, and I actually kinda like the high degree of self-discipline because it's meeting them where they are at, and if their self-discipline isn't where it can be, it gives them that opportunity. I don't know if that makes sense.
Okay. Anybody?
All I wanted to say was that I appreciated that Andrew took out the citizen thing because I know we have students in our schools who are not citizens, and I, it's, so I, that's, I'm all for that.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and vote on Andrew's motion. Do we know anymore what that as presented, oh, like, no, yes, someone needs to read it, I can't even, it's so small, I can't read it.
It's been emailed to all of you.
Oh.
Now, is this, is this with or without a friendly about the schoolhouse door? That was unclear to me whether we had done that or not. I guess, I guess we did, I guess we didn't then, so we'll just vote on it, but to me I, I don't, schoolhouse door doesn't create a new restriction, it's, it's a it's been expanded upon by the courts, but it doesn't take anything away from the fact that's, the schoolhouse door isn't a physical door anymore. So I, I think it's still fine.
Okay, Brian.
I think by voting on this, whether it passes or fails, we still have an opportunity to amend the one that's posted on here, so it gives us a clean slate.
All right, so I'm looking at the email. Does everyone had a chance to, to kinda look at that as to what Andrew's proposing? All right, and I, we've had a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Are we gonna do a voice, voice vote? Okay. Yeah. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Can't remember what it's the point of, but anyway, I just want some clarification before we do that. If I want to support this in general, but I still have a change I'd like to ask Andrew to make, then do I have to vote against this? Okay.
Yeah. I feel like
Well, I, I don't know that that's accurate because the bill would, the, the if we pass if we pass the amendment, it now says this, and then you could do another amendment from what it now says. But if you want to vote no and I'll have, I could propose a new one, then okay.
I think we need to stop muddying this up a little bit and just take this vote. All right, and, and, and move on to the next, um, the next it, um, iteration of this. Okay, so, uh, Kinsey.
Crossen.
No.
Becker.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Mills.
No.
Gerlach.
No.
McCoy.
No. Motion fails. Okay. Can we just take a pause?
Yes, please.
The wrong version is in, the wrong clean version and red line version is in Board Docs.
Oh.
Can, can I get Kinsey the right version so we can be looking at the right version ba, and then that will at least clear up, I'm thinking, some of these changes? Okay, let me just email it to her.
I have a different, I have a different idea. I move to postpone this item until the next month's, um, meeting cycle, put it on the June cycle.
That's fine. All right.
Second.
That's a motion.
All right. Um, all, all in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, so this will be moved to our next board meeting. Thank you. This is a lot of sausage making, but sometimes this is what it looks like, so. All right, um, so we pulled out, so now we've, um, we, we're on KKK, right? KKK, yes, three Ks. Yeah, it's unfortunate. Yeah. Okay, so, um, actually, we're on to L, no? Three Ks. Okay, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education Policy three twenty-one point one, scheduling of student activities Wednesday night as presented be repealed.
Second.
Discussion.
Just for clarification, this allows us as a district to have activities on Wednesdays. Activities are driven by other districts. If we're looking at inter scholastic athletics and other activities involve other districts, which I'm sure they're going to keep the same policy, but this does give us the opportunity to hold building specific or district specific events. Am I correct on that, Melissa?
You are correct. All right, the other questions are discussion. I feel like last time, oh, Andrew, do you have your, uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I should have pushed the button, but, um, yeah, for, for me, this, this one, um, I would have, I would have preferred to do some revising and, uh, when it comes right down to it for me with my self-imposed rule that I have to be eighty-five percent confident to make a change. Um, I'm not losing sleep about this one. I'm not going to debate about it for a long time, but I'm not, I'm not eighty-five percent convinced that we're getting something better here since exceptions were already possible and did happen sometimes. So, um, I'm gonna vote no, but it's not, um, I recognize there's two sides to it. And I don't, I mean, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for this one.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Brian.
Andrew, is there any concern that you'd want to share with it?
I, I think there's, I, I, I think there's some, I think there's some benefit for not, not just religion and not just one religion. And there isn't, there isn't a religion that we have a lot of in this area that has a theologically specific connection to every Wednesday evening, although I know the Catholic Church has, has often, um, had religious classes at, at those times on Wednesday. Um, I just think we could have, um, I know it's gonna pass. I, I think, um, uh, I, I think there were exception possibilities. I've had kids involved in activities. I think sometimes it makes it easier for families to do some, uh, you know, know when they have a free day. I do like more exceptions. So that's, and maybe the, maybe the only practical way to get there is to repeal this, which is probably gonna happen anyways, and that's why I'm not making too big of a deal out of it.
All right, anybody else? Okay, the motion is to repeal. It's been seconded. Um, are we gonna do a, um, a real call vote? No, all right. I think we're ready.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Mills, yes. Gerlach, yes. Crossen, yes. Lee, yes. Motion carries five to one.
Thank you. All right, we're on to, um, L, L, L is, or, go ahead, Brian.
I move that the revision sport education policy four fifty-four, child abuse and neglect reporting as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion, questions. Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Sorry? All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next, Brian?
Likes to make a motion that we bundle items M, M, M through Q, Q, Q.
Second.
All right, yep, discussion.
It's my understanding that we reordered this for some flexibility on there. So if no other board members have a concern with that, then we should be able to cover it. And Andrew, I'm kind of looking over at you. You're good with it? Okay.
All right, no discussion, no questions. And I think all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so then, um, go ahead, do the motion, Brian.
I move that items M, M, M through Q, Q, Q be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions at all? All right, Kinsey?
McCoy.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Crossen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, guys, um, that completes our voting for the night. But before we do that, I just want to mention that, um, this is the last meeting for our young Viva. We've seen a lot of you over the years. Oh, are you, is this your last meeting as well? Well, congratulations, you guys. Um, I, I wish you all the, all the luck in the future and, um, it's been a joy to have you with us. Um, Viva, we've seen you multiple years, um, and I, 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 not quite as many times, but I know you've been with us recently quite a lot, so um, good luck to you. And I'm sure these next few days are gonna be extraordinarily busy. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I've been entertaining a motion to adjourn. Oh, God. Go ahead. Sorry, guys.
I move that the Board of Education adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State nineteen point eighty-five, section one A and F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories of disc, of disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except for paragraph B applies, which if discussed within public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit for the purpose of holding expulsion hearings under the Wisconsin statute one twenty point thirteen, section one C and E three.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Nope.
Sorry, real call?
Becker.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Aye.
Crossen.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Okay, adjourned in a closed session. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications at gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.